I'd like to call the Zion City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell? Commissioner Deteen?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Generally, at this time, we have a invocation from a local minister. But I would like to just recognize, at this time, June 4th, or June 6th of 1944, when the forces of freedom did the right thing. And I'd like to remember the men and women of this country, and the countries of Britain and Canada, that stormed the beaches of Normandy 73 years ago today. Remember those that gave their lives, and those that survived but lost their youthful innocence on those beaches. I often look around today, and I see a very troubled world at times. But I think we can all agree, there would be a much more troubled world if not for the courage and determination of all those who left their blood and footprints on Utah, Omaha, Gold, Juneau, and Sword Beaches 73 years ago. I ask everyone to stand and join me for a moment of silence as we contemplate the sacrifices I ask you now to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number four, any agenda or agenda changes? Do the commissioners have any agenda changes? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
A move.
Second.
A motion and a second? Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is citizens' comments. I have three people who wish to talk about the pond near the Zion City, or Zion Senior cottages. If you're all going to say the same thing, I would ask that you appoint a spokesperson. But if you are planning on saying, speaking to different issues, then you're welcome to speak to the issue. First is Jerry Holmes.
Good evening, Mayor Hill, and commissioners, and the board. I'm here representing the Zion Senior cottages, along with some of my neighbors here, with the complaints that we've had constantly since 2013 regarding the pond, and everything not being taken care of the way it should be. The odors are horrible. We, it's even coming through the air conditioning, and now with the 90-degree weather. But this has been on, I've talked to you, Mayor Hill, several times, Commissioner Ianson several, several times regarding this. Year after year, it's been the same thing. The only time that it was ever taken care of was when, I think it was Midwest Bank had the lien on it, and they took these people to court. And Judge Hoffman had ordered that the city of Zion could do something about these people, and they had landscapers come in and take care of this property for two years. As soon as Midwest didn't hold the lien anymore, these people didn't care anymore on how they took care of this pond. The weeds, the algae, even the wildlife, everything, and the odors are terrible. When they did put any kind of a fountain in, they had motors in there that were making so much noise, I had to call Mr. Ianson several times to have them remove them. I couldn't sleep at night. My living room and my bedroom are right there. So is this other neighbors of mine. These people live farther down the street. Now, I just spoke with Mr. Ianson, and he said he would like to meet with all of us to talk about this. But I said, the same thing can't be repeated year after year. I have been doing this since 2013. I have been calling and calling, writing letters, getting in touch with people, doing everything I can to have this taken care of. It's been addressed somewhat, but not the way it should be. Not to where it would make it livable for all of us seniors here, and the wildlife there. And also, the chemicals have to be addressed that are going to be placed in that pond. When I, when they had the, when the bank had the people come in to take care of it, the landscaping people, I had talked to a landscaping company in Waukegan, that landscaper said he wouldn't touch it because of the chemicals that would be involved with the people and the wildlife. He didn't mark the responsibility. I forget the lady's name, I've got it written at home, that did take care of it. And she got VM Landscaping on Wadsworth Road, right here in Waukegan, they came in and took care of it. And when I talked to the owner there, he told me he was hesitant to do it too, because of the chemicals, because of the responsibility toward the people and the animals, the wildlife. So you just can't have somebody coming in and dumping in whatever they want for the algae, or the weeds, or anything else. They really have to know what they're doing. Right now, it's been a disaster, but that's because the piping or sewers broke or something.
Right, it's my understanding that stormwater management will be out there Tuesday.
Right, right. I mean, it's terrible. And you know what? I call and call, like I said, I start in April and May, calling regarding this pond. And it's always got stalled to the months of July and August, where these people really didn't have to spend, this is my take on it, they didn't have to spend too much money on maintaining this place. Right now, they do have someone coming in and cutting those weeds, because I think when you came to my house, when you first became mayor, because I'm doing this since Mayor Harrison was in office, okay? You had come to my house, and you saw how bad it was. I don't know if you remember the weeds that were way over the fence, eight feet tall. We couldn't even see into the forest. That's how bad it was to let, you know, to let it go. I can't remember if that was the year or not. There have been so many years here. Regarding a pond, I mean, it's ridiculous, really, why this is not addressed, why we can't take these people to court, why they are not responsible for the property that they own. This is taking care of the Kmart Plaza driving, you know, the parking lots and everything.
Let me just, I guess I need to ask a couple of questions, raise a couple of points. It seems to me that the issue changes from year to year. It's not always the same problem. It's not like nothing's being done. They did cut the weeds, they put in aerators, they got rid of the algae, and then, but each time, there's a different problem that comes up. Now, at the moment, it's my understanding that the pond is leaking into Kellogg Creek, and that's why it's so low. But we have no control over that. That is Lake, that is the Storm, Lake County Stormwater Management, and they will be out there to look at it, I believe, on Tuesday, Ms. Johnson.
They'll meet with the ownership and the contractor that's going to make the repairs.
And I think it'd be a great idea if you're there.
Me? Oh, yeah, I'll be there, yeah.
Right. Are they meeting out on site?
From what I understand, they'll meet on site.
Okay.
Now, Mayor Hill, I want to mention to you, because I have pictures of how it was done, the proper way, and how it is now. Right now, and last year and the year before, okay, weeds are growing out of the water, okay? They're, I don't know how tall.
Right. I mean, but you, 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 I understand that, but you do have to remember, this is a detention pond. I mean, weeds are going to grow, there are detention ponds all over the city that have weeds growing out of the water, and that's part of what, what this is.
I understand that.
Okay.
But prior to this, those weeds are, they're not there, or they were pulled out, or they were backhoed out, or something. It was never like this. It was clean, everything was neat, there was no algae, there was nothing there. Also, there were three fountains that they had from the landscaping company. You didn't hear a sound from the water pounding, like from a fireman's hose that you tip up, and it's pounding down where you can't sleep. They had three fountains, the water was clean, there was no algae, it was like a park. That's how clean it was. And that's because the people came out every week and cleaned it. Now, they do have someone coming and cutting the grass, if that's grass or whatever they're cutting, but he rides around all over, and he does cut that. And that's the end of the story. Everything by the base of the water, nothing is really cleaned out over there or cut down. Sometime, he'll take that weed whacker, I think, and go down there. And I watch, I can't help but see it, my windows are right there.
Right. I guess my point is that this is, I think if your expectation is that this is going to be maintained like a park, I don't think that's going to happen. And I think it's a, again, it's a, it's a detention pond, and for the expectations that it is going to be like a park, I think those are probably unreal expectations.
Well, what I, why I'm mentioning this is because, when it was under court order, and they had the landscaping people do it, it was clean. The water was clean. Why can't these people do that again, like they had to do at that time?
I, I, I.
You know, I mean, why, how come it can be done any kind of way now, to where there is algae? Before that pipe broke, there was a lot of algae before this pipe broke.
Mm-hmm.
There always has been algae, okay? There's always been a problem.
Okay.
And I mean, it hasn't been to where there hasn't. I've talked to Mr. Ianson, I don't know how many times, during the year.
One, hopefully on Tuesday, it'll be addressed.
Okay, because we're all going to get together. All right, we, we're gonna, and set up a meeting with the people from Zion Senior cottages.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
And see if this can be taken care of one way or another. The only thing is, I don't understand, is when other people in Zion, they get citations right away, if their grass is a little bit too long and so forth. Over here, these people are getting away with all this, I don't understand it. A lot of people don't. I mean, it's not only me.
Have they been cited at all?
Numerous times, numerous occasions.
They have been cited. They do get tickets.
And they don't do anything about it.
I'm assuming they pay a fine.
There's been a lot of action taken.
You know, they probably pay a fine, and they figure the fine is cheaper than having them maintained.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't know.
And that's all we do.
I, all I know is I'm concerned about our health, because we are seniors, and all the people that live there, and now, they can smell it already down the block. Can you imagine what it is, right by us, right by our rooms? It's, we're like 15 feet from that pond.
Okay.
Okay?
Right.
So we'll talk about it then Tuesday, Ms. Johnson? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank everyone else also.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Does anyone else wish to speak on this also?
I'm Terry Johnson. I live two doors down from Jerry, and everything she says is completely accurate. I was impressed last year, when I first moved there. I didn't see a lot of algae. And I know one thing, it didn't smell like that, and it didn't look that bad. And if he used a weed whacker, because I am home on Sundays, I've never seen him use it, last year or this year, and it's terrible, you know? So, it's, it's a joke, and...
Well, I was done yesterday, and I mean, I understand, I can see that the water's low. I didn't smell anything. Now, it was cooler, it was only about 64 degrees when I was there.
The wind probably blew it.
I'm not, I'm not saying that it doesn't smell, but I'm just telling you, I was there yesterday, and it looked pretty good to me. I mean, the, it was mowed, and it's a detention pond. It is very, very low, but that's because it's leaking. So, we'll, we will get it straightened out.
Well, we hope so, because whether I stayed there, I'm 67, whether I stayed there a long time or not, it's pitiful.
We'll do everything we can to get it straightened out.
It's really disheartening to see something like that. And live your life, working, working hard. Me, I've worked since 68. Graduated at Dwight David Eisenhower, went to work at Oak Forest, Cook County, and, to be honest, I drew unemployment a year, a year and a half out of my life. So, I'm college graduate from Chicago State, did five years there, and I got insurance in, all my license and insurance, property, casualty, life, health, as well as broker. Century 21 and Oakline holds my test results. I've tried everything I could, and to live there, that's the step, that's really disgusting, you know, to have to look at it and smell it. And when I, sometime, I have to work, this is my fourth year working with the larger buses, the 39-footers and so forth, and a lot of times, you look at your life, and you say, you know what, I could have got on the road like my brothers. That's one of their skills. Four of them are truck drivers out of seven. We come from a family of farmers. This, that's, that's disgusting, what we have to go through, whether I stayed there or not. It's really disgusting. Okay, thank you for listening.
Right, thank you. Next is Kathy Champagne.
Good evening, Mayor Hill, commissioners. Thank you for the time. I have some questions about FOIAs, and I realize you may not have the answers at your fingertips, but I think they're worth asking. How many FOIA requests have you received in the last three years?
What would you guess?
Speculate a guess, several hundred at least.
How many FOIA requests were made by each of the top five most prolific requesters?
Those are tough questions. Well, we never really come close to the definition of a requestor, a frequent requestor. We do have a couple of requesters that I would say we get maybe once a month from.
Are you willing to identify the requesters?
Give you FOIA.
I thought about that.
We get FOIAs frequently from the Better Government Association.
Okay.
From an organization called Smart Procure, which are, they're normally interested in accounting and purchasing information, which puts some stress on Director Nabel's department. Howard Handler is a, from a Realtor group, he frequently requests things regarding the rental inspection program. Those are the only ones that jump to mind right now.
Do we get a number from this last election?
Not the city. The Zion Township did receive quite a few from Mr. Idlerberg.
Can you provide an estimate of taxpayer money sent on providing the information for FOIAs? I'm thinking, no, I've asked that question.
Not right now, but I think it's something we might be able to put together, as far as employee hours, and then multiply it times the wages. And I think we can perhaps keep track of that as we go forward, and maybe get a, probably a not-accurate guess, looking backwards. It's been a, it, well, again, much of this was the township, and Clerk Burke Kemper is also the township clerk. So that's taken hours and hours and hours of her time putting those together.
I've looked at the FOIA page on the city website, and you've got a lot of really good stuff there. I wonder if you would be willing to add one more item, and that would be a log of the FOIA requesters. That would contain the date, the requestor, the information requested, and a cost, if possible, which, that might not be realistic, but... So basically, date, requestor, and what they're asking for.
A lo, kind of like a log, you mean? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, a log, so that, so that anybody can go up to the website and look it up, and see who's requesting and what.
Okay.
I would defer to the law.
Our legal, our legal counsel will look into it.
Okay, other cities are doing, other cities are doing it. So I think that's doable, and I think once a person files a FOIA request, that becomes a matter of public record. So I think that is doable.
And what were the items you wanted to see? The date, the requestor?
The date, the requestor, and the information requested. And I have one more request.
Sure.
Considering that number 45 is threatening to pull out of the Paris Agreement, would you be willing to stand with other mayors and governors in this country, saying that you're willing to stick by the agreements that we made, which is basically reduce carbon by 26% by the year 2025?
I think that would be something that the city council would have to address as a group.
I hope you all consider it.
Thank you. Okay. Item number six is the consent agenda. Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on May 16, 2017, at 7:13 PM, and approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on May 16, 2017, at 8:46 PM. Bills, vouchers 126503 through 126618 drawn on First Ameribank, total $718,707.80, and proclamation Memorial Day, May 29, 2017.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A move.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number seven is consider passing a resolution as follows. 7A is relating to participation by elected officials in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, IMRF, per Clerk Burke Kemper.
A special memorandum was received from IMRF requiring that all governing bodies of local units of government with elected officials participating in IMRF pass new resolutions reaffirming that the positions meet the IMRF hourly standard. In July of 2016, the city council passed a resolution adopting the annual 1,000-hour standard for IMRF participation for the mayor's position only. The municipal code was also amended at that time to provide for the mayor's participation in IMRF if eligible. The amendment stated that the position of mayor is qualifying based on the office requiring work for 20 hours per week in 50 weeks of the year, and if requested by IMRF, the mayor should be prepared to produce documentation verifying that the hours required to perform the duties of the office meet or exceed the $1,000 IMRF hourly standard. I respectfully request that the council consider adopting a resolution reaffirming that the position of mayor meets the IMRF 1,000 hourly standard.
Before you're asked to vote on this, I just want to point out that this applies to the mayor only, and this mayor is not participating in IMRF, but any mayors that would come after me, if they meet the 1,000-hour criteria, they would be able to participate in IMRF. But I just want to be sure that you understand that I'm not participating in IMRF. So no one on the city council is participating in IMRF. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number eight is consider passing ordinances as follows. 8A, granting a special use permit to operate a landscape supply, organic waste transfer station, salt supply, and contractor parking for property located at 1410 Green Bay Road. Second reading, per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The last city council meeting, the city council approved a special use permit with conditions that Mr. Shaw obtained all his proper IUPA permitting, that he install additional screening, limit his vehicles to 40,000 pounds of storage. So tonight is the second reading to address that.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Mr. Shaw, I appreciate your patience in getting this through, and welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck with the city.
Item 8B is to enter into a sixth addendum to lease agreement for certain property, commonly known as 122527th Street, Zion Martha's Nursery and Learning Center, per Clerk Burke Kemper.
In June of 2010, the city entered into a lease agreement with Martha's Daycare, who is currently doing business as Martha's Nursery and Learning Center, for use of the city-owned parcel known as 122527th Street, or use by the daycare for outdoor activities. It's basically a top line. Every June since 2011, the city has entered into an addendum to extend the lease for one year. The lease term begins on July 1 and ends on June 30, and the rent is $100 a month. I respectfully request that the council consider passing an ordinance entering into a sixth amendment to the lease agreement between the city and Martha's Nursery and Learning Center, with the term beginning on July 1, 2017, and ending on June 30, 2018, with the rent in the amount of $100 per month.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there, we do this every year, rather than every other year, every three years, or...
It started out as a longer lease, and we have that waiting for cost unit purposes. Technically, the city has the authority to enter a longer lease, but that way, we don't know what the rent will be, if there's any modification to that. It also requires yearly certificates of insurance and that. So, in the past, sometimes things have been overlooked, if they're not done on a yearly basis, so...
Okay.
It's more, it's more temporary in nature.
Okay. We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine is discussion, authorization, and approval. 9A is consider abolishing the emergency notification system policy for Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. With our recent separation from Emergency Communications Network, the parent vendor of Code Red, effective June 1 of this year, I'm requesting that the city of Zion abolish the attached emergency notification system policy, including attachments 1 and 2. Residents were informed the service would no longer be used via Code Red message on May 30 of 2017.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
How does this impact our citizens?
Over the six years or so that we've had Code Red, we only put out three messages a year, basically. One for nostalgia days, Sharon Road being closed, mosquitoes spring right before 4th of July, and Jubilee Days, Sharon Road being closed. So I don't, most people know those events are going to happen now, so I see little impact. With social media and everything else out there, word is being spread.
And the, the cost was?
We were paying $12,500 a year.
Right, that was part of the discussion that we had during the, when we were going over the budget, said it's, it's not absolutely necessary, and anything that's not absolutely necessary in these days is not staying in the budget very long, so... So, one more question. Were you able to, with the social media, we can direct citizens to the Zion homepage for information?
Certainly. I mean, the police department has a Facebook page, city of Zion, or the fire department has a Facebook page, plus we have the city webpage. I think between the three major websites there, they have a lot of likes, viewers. Those often get shared with other major pages within the city. I think the word is spread.
And I think the most effective way is with the local newspaper. So, we have a motion and a second? Further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9B is consider proposal for Christopher Burke Engineering of Rosemont, Illinois, to design and construction engineering services, and request permission to advertise for bids for the replacement of the water main in the 1,000 and 1,100 blocks of 19th Street, per Director Colangelo.
If I may, I'll read from Director Colangelo's memo. This is a proposal for design and construction engineering services for the replacement of the water main in the 1,000 and 1,100 blocks of 19th Street. This section of main built in 1963, has suffered numerous breaks over the years, and is in need of replacement. Staff is recommending approval of the proposal for not to exceed the amount of $38,000 from Christopher Burke Engineering of Rosemont, Illinois, and to advertise for bids upon completion of design and bid documents. The estimated project cost is approximately $250,000. Excuse me. Funding for these services and construction would come from the Fund 49 Waterworks and sewer capital improvements, and have been budgeted accordingly.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9C is consider appointment to fill position of Director Swalco, Board of Directors, City of Zion, per Mayor Hill. And as you see in the resolution, my recommendation is that Commissioner Fisher be appointed as our representative on the Swalco Board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dettin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Or, excuse me, Mayor Hill?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item 9D is consider TIP appointment for Mayor Hill. We have had a request to replace Kathy Richards, who is presently the high school representative on the TIP board, with the business manager for the high school, Audrey Little, and I would recommend that Audrey Little be appointed to the TIP board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second? Discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dettin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9E is consider approval of Cubs Commission bylaws for Mayor Hill. We've looked at these before, the Cubs group has gotten together, and they are asking that the Citizens United for Better Zion mission statement and bylaws be adopted by the City Council, so they can begin their work. Is there a motion to approve the Cubs bylaws?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dettin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9F is consider approving budget for fiscal year May 1, 2017, through April 30, 2018, per Director Nabel, and this is the general fund budget only, correct?
Correct. You have before you the budget we discussed in the budget workshop, which prior to this, as Mayor Hill mentioned, this is general fund only. The rest of the funds will be coming before the council at the next council meeting on June 20. With changes that are made, that were recommended in the budget workshop, I would recommend the approval of general fund budget with total revenues of $14,660,316. Total expenses of $16,239,671. And taking the net transfers in and out as well from other funds, we would have a net deficit of $176,168 to be used, to be made up with utilizing beginning cash reserves. Again, this is the general fund only, and staff makes a recommendation of approval with those amounts.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the general fund budget for fiscal year May 1, 2017, through April 30.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dettin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number 10 is departmental commentary. Do the department heads have anything to say?
Yes, sir, I do. Just wanted to inform the council and the citizens that the Zion Police Department will be conducting another summer enforcement operation, which kicks off tomorrow and will run through June 14, next Wednesday. This operation is aligned with our continued commitment to address the intolerable criminal activity and gun incidents in our community. Our concentrated efforts will include areas that have experienced aggravated battery firearms, shots fired calls where physical evidence has been recovered, and areas where we have recovered firearms from individuals. We will also focus our enforcement on individuals known to carry out these violent crimes, and individuals wanted on various warrants. The operation will include several components, as we did last summer. We will have a citywide warrant sweep, which will include the Lake County Sheriff's Office, the Illinois State Police, and Zion Police Department detectives. We have directed proactive patrol of Zion Police tactical units in areas identified to have a greater frequency of gun crime offenses. The Zion Police Department gang unit will have directed activities in cooperation with other law enforcement entities in these areas as well. The Illinois State Police District 2 Traffic and ISP District 15 Criminal Patrol will be in Zion assisting us. Lake County Bay will be focusing on areas of drug and gang crimes, and we'll also be doing our county-wide, or I'm sorry, our citywide sex offender registration checks. Our objectives are to locate and arrest dangerous violent individuals with outstanding warrants, focus police resources on known areas of gun violence, shots fired, and we're going to focus on specific individuals who have been carrying out majority of our crime and gun violence in Zion. We'll also focus on areas of gang-related activity. The priority is to create a safer summer for citizens within the City of Zion, as well as increasing safety for the officers' work in the streets this summer. This is not merely a stat-driven initiative. Our objective is to make a realistic impact by making arrests, recovering illegal handguns, and saturating high-crime areas. Our intent is to send a high visibility message in order to deter violent crimes while creating a positive presence in the community. Our officers will be focusing on individuals with a known involvement in drug and gun violence. I want to thank the citizens of Zion for their support and their patience. Obviously, we'll be stopping a lot of vehicles, and some of our citizens may be caught up in those traffic stops. We ask for your patience. If you're a law-abiding citizen, and your license is valid, et cetera, we'll be sent on your way. The other thing that we're doing this year is also an education component in addition to the enforcement, and that's going to take place on Saturday, June 10, at the Zion Public Library. Between 12:00 PM and 1:30 PM, we partnered with Bridge Builders and the NAACP of Lake County. The topic of this course or this presentation is your rights, your responsibilities, and good suggestions for police traffic stops. That's open to, I think, approximately 40 spots. We do have limited seating there, based on the room size. If you want information on that, you can visit the Lake, the Zion Police Department's Facebook page. I think also, if you connect to the city's Facebook, or website, there's a link for that as well, if I'm not mistaken. Again, I just want to thank people for their patience. You're going to see a lot of police presence in the next week. That's going to concentrate generally where we've had most of our shots fired calls. We're also going to address the recent shots fired calls at 29th and Gabriel. I think one of our citizens commented on that. Supplied some misinformation at that meeting, that we had two individuals shot, which was incorrect. Nobody was shot in that exchange of gunfire between two groups. However, it came close to somebody being injured, and I think you're going to see a very high increase, police presence in that neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Chief, if you don't object, I would like to, is there, can we get that piece that you just read out to the Cubs organization?
Yeah, it'll be sent out tomorrow morning.
Okay. Does Cheryl have it?
No, she does not.
Okay.
That'll go out tomorrow morning.
Right.
It'll also go on our Facebook page tomorrow. We're going to continue this throughout the summer. There'll be operations in July and August. We're not going to release those dates until those initiatives take effect. Obviously, we don't want to give the bad guys too much of a warning of when we're going to be out there on the streets and hitting the neighborhoods, so... We also encourage people to call at any time when they see criminal activity during this week. If you guys see an area that we're not in, that you feel needs to be addressed, we're always open to those suggestions. Just call the police department. You can ask for either Deputy Chief Henderson or myself. Thank you.
Chief, those calls that are made in about suspicious activities, are those calls usually anonymous?
They can be. If the citizen calls and says they want it to be anonymous, that information will not be put over the radio.
I've just talked to so many people that are concerned about calling in, thinking they'll be tied into it as a result, they might not call, but it's better to call than to not, if there's an issue going on in your neighborhood.
Sure. The other thing that we have the benefit today that we didn't have, you know, five, 10 years ago, is the MTTs in the car, or computers. A lot of the information's transmitted that way, so we don't even put it over the airways, especially if somebody calls in and says, every time you show up, or five minutes before you show up, or every time you put the call out, they're taking off. There's quite a few apps that people have on their phones, so they can monitor a police radio. We run into that all the time. Some very younger criminals who are a little more apt on that, will have our frequency on their phone, and they're listening to our dispatched calls. If we suspect that, those calls are actually put over the MTTs in the cars.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Anything else from the department heads? Item number 11 is announcements. June 17 is nostalgia days. June 20, 6:30 is the Zion Township Board meeting. At 7 o'clock is the Zion City Council meeting. June 24, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Trash to Treasure Lawn Sale at Shiloh Boulevard and Elisha Avenue to benefit the Zion Historical Society. July 4, the city offices are closed for the holidays. July 5, 7:00 PM, the Zion City Council meeting. Item number 12 is a closed session pursuant to five ILCS 120/2 open meetings for the discussion of pending litigation personnel. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dettin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.[1789.01]